Good evening, the time being six thirty P M. I'd like to call to order the two thousand twenty-two Tilton Northfield Fire District Commissioner's Warrant Public Hearing on the warrant. Let the record show that all three commissioners are present, as well as the chief and administrative assistant in the club. And several members of the public. We're going to review the warrant article. Do we have to read first? Do we have to read the vote, the voting ones?
No.
The first four?
You don't have to.
All right. So whoever has, does each person read whichever article they have?
You can ask if they want you to read them, or if they just want to ask you questions.
To the public?
Yes.
So to the public, do you want us to read each article, or you just want to ask us questions about?
I think it would be advantageous to the people watching the video.
To read it, that's what I was thinking. All right, so who has Article five?
Me.
All right, I want you to read that one.
To see if the district will raise an appropriate sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the land and building capital reserve. I can't say, fund. Previously established, this article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and recommended by the Budget Committee.
Anyone have any questions on that?
So that's tax money?
Yes.
That's not money from the unreserved fund.
No, that's tax, it's raised in taxes.
To go into the pot.
I'm sorry?
It's going into the pot.
Right.
To defray future costs of the actual bill.
What was the thought process of raising tax dollars rather than using the unreserved fund?
Well, this is taking, preparing for the future in using to build, or to build a fund to be able to withdraw from that, to help offset the cost of whatever the station may be whenever it gets approved by the voters.
Right, well, my, my, I know that, I understand the purpose of the money. The source of the money is my question. You have two choices, you either raise it by tax dollars, or you, you fund it from the unreserved fund. And you, you went with the tax dollar rather than the unreserved fund. I'm wondering what the thought process was in that. You may, you may end up seeing an amendment at the meeting to change the funding source. And if we had information now, you might avoid that.
Well, we don't want to deplete our unassigned fund balance too low, that we have to keep it at a certain level, and we don't know where that is at the current time. And I hope, I don't know when the audit is performed.
It's next week.
Next week?
Yes.
So hopefully.
We'll have those figures before.
Yeah, we'll have that figure by town, uh, district meeting. So we'll have, we'll have a, a number and make sure that we're not hurting ourselves funding that fine balance. Article six, Fire Prevention Expendable Trust Fund. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars for the purpose of adding to the existing fire prevention expendable trust fund, with said funds to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee, with majority vote required. So this is taking the money that we've received in from inspections, fire inspections, it goes into the unassigned fund balance, the general fund, and we put it into this fund so that in the future we can spend from that fund for other things, which is in the next article. Article seven, Fire Prevention Fund. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars for the purpose of purchasing materials, tools, and equipment related to public education, code enforcement, training, et cetera, with said funds to be withdrawn from the fire prevention expendable trust fund. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee. So this is actually taking from that fund and using it for the materials that they need for the upcoming year, um, and preparing for, for, um, fire prevention. Any questions?
No. A year or so ago, we weren't doing much in the school, COVID, has everything kind of turned back around?
Not quite yet.
No, not quite, at least.
Kind of.
It seemed like the number might have been a little lower than what it had been, so.
Yeah, almost a wash, usually it seems, in years.
Yeah, I thought it was more of like six, seven grand a year that we'd be doing, so that's what made me wonder, not able to do as much activity-wise.
Think he has some leftover stuff that he wasn't able to use in the past, and I'll say.
Oh, make the car came.
Article eight.
Okay, this may, to see if the district will vote to appropriate the sum of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for the purpose on adding to the existing insurance deductible expenditures fund, with this fund to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. Funds appropriated from the funds do not affect the tax rate. The article is recommended by the Board, the Board and the Commissioners and the Budget Committee. Thank you.
For the future. Any questions?
I'm still on the last two. So ninety-six went in, and what's this coming out, is that because we're building for the trailer?
Yes.
To get, get ready to renovate that? Okay. That's still a plan.
Yep, that plan hasn't changed. Just we don't know when it's gonna need it, and.
Yeah, no, you want to be ready.
Any questions on Article eight? Article nine.
Article nine, Communication Towers Expendable Trust Fund. See if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of adding to the existing communications tower expendable trust fund, with said funds to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required.
Any questions on?
All right. Article ten, Dry Hydrants and Cisterns Expendable Trust Fund. To see if the district will vote to establish a dry hydrant cistern expendable trust fund per RSA thirty-one colon nineteen dash A. Spender from this fund will be used for the design, engineering, purchasing of materials, installation, and any fees or permits required to install dry hydrants and cisterns within the district, and to raise an appropriate one dollar to put in the fund, with this amount to be, to come from the unassigned fund balance. Further, to name the Board of Commissioners as agents to the expend from said fund. Future funding will come from warrant, warrant articles at annual district meetings. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required.
Questions?
The question, less about the, the expendable trust fund, more about how that fund gets funded.
Next article.
Article eleven.
I'm, I'm not talking about how it's going to get funded through the district. If, if there's a development going in that is in an area where there are no hydrants, does the fire district have the ability to for, to encourage the developer to put in a cistern?
Like get that fees or?
So, so depends upon how large the development is, that we can require a cistern, or can require, depending upon the density as well, that they be sprinkled, one or the other usually is the case, so, um, say, uh, like a rolling meadows up at the end of school street, that was such that they could have a, a cistern or sprinklers, and the, and the contractor chose to put sprinklers in every building, and that suits our business.
So how is that, who decides that, that the development requires auxiliary water and cooling forces, is that solely in the particular town?
It's, it's, it's within the building code, it's the state of New Hampshire, and depending upon the size of development.
So it will be the fire district that will?
We determine whether it meets those requirements or not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Article eleven, Add to the Dry Hydrant Cistern Expendable Trust Fund. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the Dry Hydrant Cistern Expendable Trust Fund previously established. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required. So this is essentially, the first one was to open it up, and this one is to start putting money into this for down the road when possibly utilizing it.
Is there a plan in place for either cisterns or dry hydrants in twenty-two?
So there, there's a process in place, we've looked at, we, the chief has been looking around different areas, and there's a whole process with land use agreements, access, uh, whole, depending on what you're putting in and all that.
Right, but do you, do you have a goal to, to have X number of, to, to build or design X number of dry hydrants and or cisterns in twenty-two?
I don't think we have an established location other than a dry hydrant or two.
I have, I'm working on currently two cistern locations and two dry hydrant locations, but we haven't really finalized any agreement with the property owners, so it's, it's a process.
What's the cost for a cistern? Forty thousand?
Around seventy, fully installed, seventy to eighty thousand dollars.
Really?
Yes.
Would that be thirty thousand a gallon?
Yes, minimum thirty thousand gallons.
Chief, is that like an above-ground structure, or?
It's, it's usually, uh, level with the ground.
Okay.
So it's kind of underground, but it.
So not like these Lowe's, Home Depot, et cetera, okay?
More concrete, something bulked with?
Yeah.
Hydrant water?
Yep.
I think it's a great idea, that, that, in my opinion, should have been done years ago.
Right.
It's, it's long, long overdue, that's a fantastic idea.
Article twelve, Establish Contingency Fund. To see if the district will vote to establish a contingency fund per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-eight dash A, and raise and appropriate twenty-nine thousand four hundred four dollars to be put in the fund, the sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. Funds appro, funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is not recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required. Any questions?
I'd like to know why the Budget Committee did not recommend it.
I, I didn't get to vote, but my, my vote would have been, just as one person speaking, is the having a contingency fund, I think there's been some demonstrated history that nobody's using it correctly, or you, so the hypothetical example that we laugh about as well, if the boiler blows up, and I guess the boiler did let go on one of the stations, and they didn't go and use it for that either, so why have the fund if they're not gonna use it, or have, have a circumstance that warrants going to use that fund when they're not being stewards of, why have it if you're not gonna use it? You know, they, they think what's happened is they look for money left in their regular operating budget to solve problems. But is that kind of a, kind of a mentality?
We also felt that there's a process to, to overspend, and we preferred that process over a contingency fund.
The, a process would involve petitioning our, um, D R. Couldn't get the alphabet, so. Thank you. Article thirteen.
Article thirteen, Pressurized Hydrants. To see if the district will vote to authorize commissioners to enter into a five-year agreement beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of providing pressurized hydrant services necessary for fire suppression, and raise the appropriate annual cost of one hundred thousand dollars for this year. The article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is not recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required. This is where your question comes in.
Exactly.
Yep.
So you already know my question, you want me to repeat it?
So you, I believe the question was where the hundred thousand dollars came from, was your question, or was it different from that?
No, it's, it's, how did we arrive at the hundred thousand dollar value for that service?
All right, so originally, we were paying one twenty-five for about five years, that is correct. Last year, the Tilton Northfield Aqueduct Water District wanted to go to one hundred and fifty-six, I believe, for a five-year contract. Um, we made sure that in that contract, there was a, um, escape clause if it was not passed at the district, um, because we wanted to make sure of that, we didn't want to complicate. Um, the vote failed by one vote, so at that point, we did not have a contract with them at all. There has been litigation process going, ongoing this whole year, which is part of what you had said about the attorney cost earlier. Um, it's still an undetermined event in the outcome. So we have tried working with the water district. The amount that they wanted us to go into an agreement for was even higher than before, based on their hydrant tariff tax, um, higher rates, things that they were citing. They have an upcoming filtration project they have to take care of, and what they were asking for, for five years, or, and to pay in the rears for last year, which was voted down by the public, we said no. So at this time, there is still no discussion with, we have tried reaching out to get input and try to work together to finding a number, um, and it has not been happening. Communications have not, two-way communication. So we put up to an amount in there that if they choose to come to the table, we would have to have something there. It was a, and if they choose to not, then that hundred thousand doesn't get spent.
So this wasn't, uh, based on negotiation, this is an attempt at?
Having something.
To go, oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
I missed that.
Yeah, because they had nothing, there was no talk, other than, uh, at one point, it was even higher than that.
Yeah.
So.
Has, has there been any, but you say the discussion has been really limited, so I probably know the answer to the question, but have, have they given you any guidance as to what the cost, or what the value per hydrant is?
I believe it's four hundred and fifty dollars per hydrant with about a hundred hydrants in the district, that they break down.
And, and is that quarterly?
Yeah.
That's how it came to about the one fifty-six roughly.
So, so, I'm sorry, so it's four fifty per quarter, so it's eighteen hundred a year each? Right? Eighteen hundred a year each, times?
About, about a hundred.
About a hundred. Okay.
So about a one eighty, a hundred and eighty, probably.
Where did the four fifty per quarter come from?
That is from an understanding hydrant study tariff that they are referring to. It's some documentation that the water district presented, that this is what their estimated value is.
What, is there any way for us to put our finger on the value of a hydrant, um, through, I mean, we're not the only ones that have hydrants in the town that the department uses.
I think they compared with, uh, Pittsfield?
Pittsfield was one they compared with?
Pittsfield was a lot higher than, than ours, a lot higher. Most, most, most of your towns, Franklin and the other one, are owned by the city.
Right, I got that.
Yeah, so it's.
And then you gotta look at places on a ten o'clock, right, so.
So, so has, has the, the reason I'm asking this is because it seems like there's gonna be an ongoing issue until we're able to put our finger on what's, what, what's the value that we put on those hydrants, and compare that to the value that they put on hydrants. It, it appears to me right now, um, that, and, and back when I was a commissioner and we paid the one twenty-five nine, that was the value that they, that the fire, that the aqueduct put on those hydrants, and we had no basis to change that. And, and now we're seven years later, and we still don't have a value for what a hydrant, what the, what's the value of a hydrant? We, we still don't know. And until, until we can do that, whether we say a hundred grand, or a hundred and twenty-five nine, or a hundred and fifty-six, or a hundred and eighty, all we're doing is we're just grabbing numbers out of the air. So if, if we can, if there's something for us to narrow it down and say, look, this is the value of the hydrant, this is what we're willing to pay, then I, I think we'll be a lot better off long-term, because this is not gonna go away, right?
And that's part of what we did try taking to them for discussion, is what the value of it is. Unfortunately, I think it, the focus was more on getting last year's money that was not available due to contract. Um, the voters voted it down, there was no obligation to last year's contract money, and that seemed to be a high focus of the matter.
Mm-hmm.
So it wasn't the current value for this year, it was the current value of this year, and how do we?
Right, recoup.
Correct. And I think that is what we, where things had been left at the moment.
Okay. Another flag, flag that was raised when, when you just gave your, your little presentation was, why do we pay for their filtration system? Why is it the fire department, the fire district's responsibility to upgrade their facilities?
That would be a question, so.
For water that's not gonna be consumed.
So we're not the sole replacement of their funds, but it's a substantial project that the regulations are being placed on them for clear, potable, or usable water. Um, the water that comes out of a hydrant to put on a fire, as long as it's not gasoline in, will still work good, but they have certain restrictions and stuff. That is more of a water district question to have their meetings, and that would be a great opportunity for the public to go to their meetings and ask those questions.
I mean, that, that to me sounds like that's the purpose of the rate base, is to pay for those infrastructure upgrades, right? And, and granted, we would be part of that rate base, but we wouldn't be a hundred percent of it.
And I don't think their intent is for us to be a hundred percent, but it, their intent is, it's a substantial cost, and it's a substantial impact on the community.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But I can't speak for the water district.
Right. But, uh, but I, I will, because I've been to quite a few of their meetings, and I were kind of got our own tangles with sewer commission, the sewer commission with the water district and everything, and they, they wanted us to participate in replacing all their meters, because we bought, we were, the sewer commission was buying the meter readings from the water district, and.
Yeah.
Like, they wanted to pay for other things that related. But I get, and they paid for a pretty expensive rate study, and they received advice from, and so the rate payers are paying an increase for, you know, for homeowners and commercial, and so they have a rate study, and they have a rate increase going in for sprinklers and the one-inch line and the two-inch line, everything, so they have a full schedule of money to, to make back for these capital projects, so it shouldn't all come out of us. And to your point, four hundred, who sets the rate of four hundred and fifty dollars per plug? Well, what happens when it, we, remember when they were all getting painted, paint jobs on the bonnets, the color coating, oh, that one's a five hundred gallon, this one's a thousand, and this one's a fifteen hundred, and they all had, they were all flowing at different rates, why are they all the same price? So that's when it became a, well, we're paying for a complete system, because there was a time when, I think the Budget Committee, at its inception, pushed back on, why are we paying per hydrant when they don't all flow the same way? So it was a collective system, that you were paying that, that one twenty-five nine for a system in place comprised of a number of hydrants, and that the, the district would get, the water district would continue to add hydrants to the system, so you weren't paying per hydrant, but then somebody didn't add them, backed it out into a per hydrant thing. So if they add hydrants, we weren't paying for more hydrants as they added them or upgraded them, but, but yeah, it's, it's a moving target, and no, nobody has been able to satisfy my curiosity as they have yours.
Seems like we're grabbing numbers out of the air.
Right.
On, on both sides.
Yep.
Chief, a question for you with regards to this. I know it's very difficult to do, but can, can we try to estimate how much water we actually pull from that system on it every time you go on a call and you use a hydrant?
Yes.
Can we keep, uh, can we document that such that we can go to the aqueduct company and say, look, we only used fifteen thousand gallons last year, or whatever?
Yes.
And, 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 I mean, what that does is that backs us up as to our argument that we're being overcharged.
We can estimate fairly closely what we use at each fire, and we do document that, and so it's in our records. So we can keep track of how much water we use from the hydrant system every year. Part of the fee that we pay, I'm kind of defending the water district, which is a little bit here, is the availability of having those available.
Right, right, no question.
Not just.
Right.
Using the water, but the availability of them. So I think part of the cost of that is, how much would it cost the water district to buy the fire hydrant, to install the fire hydrant? How much would it cost the water district to go from, say they could only, they get away with a six-inch line, but since it has a fire hydrant on it, and we want a particular flow to flow, uh, for a fire building, you know, building on fire, you need a certain, an increase in size of pipe, what's the delta between the six inch and the eight inch, or the ten inch? Those are factors that I think that they could come together and find out what each hydrant is worth, or what does it cost the, the water district to maintain, purchase and maintain? I know they, uh, they, they winterize them every year, you know, and they put antifreeze in them, there's a certain cost to that. They used to help us with clearing snow from them, I don't know if that's happened this year, but.
So I, I mean.
That has a cost to it as well, you know? So there, there, they do have, there is a cost to the fabric of fire hydrant and maintaining them, we just don't really know what it is because they haven't looked at it in that manner, I would say.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I, at the inception, when, when it was a privately-owned company, there was tariff limitations and regulations with P U C that could spell out what they could and couldn't charge, and I think there was, that's.
I think that was their starting point.
Yeah, that was their stepping off, where it's like, okay, there's this much pipe in the ground, there's this much debt, there's this much, when they improved a lot of things, and they were allowed to charge a certain amount based on P U C regulation, and then when it became a, a district that bought the company, the, I think the commissioners, the first slate of commissioners, just went ahead and adopted that, voted that tariff in, and said, well, that's what we're allowed to do, so we voted it. Totally different when you're a municipality owner, and I think that's where the fork in the road was, that we had that number initially, and that was, I remember the first Budget Committee was trying to hammer on that.
Might, might I encourage, you know, when this discussion occurs, because it's going to at some point, all right, they can't, they can't stone all forever, because they'll, they'll go ballyhoo if we're not subsidizing them. It would be, it would be, I think it would be beneficial for our argument to have this information and this data, and be able to present it to them, and, and absolutely, we should be, we should be helping them with the infrastructure to supply the water, because it's not, I mean, if you barely put a hydrant in the ground, it doesn't, you can't hook up to it until it's hooked to the system, right? So they, I, I totally get that there's a cost involved in that, but there has to be a fair way to determine what that value is to us, such that we're not subsidizing their system, because that's what it feels like we're doing.
I think the other thing, Paul, though, you gotta remember, we paid a hefty number for it. We're paying back, we paid for the place. It's not just the water, too, because we, we did purchase it, I mean, the town did purchase it, they gotta have that money back, I mean, they borrowed money to, I think they did.
But we didn't upgrade their system just to provide water to hydrants, did they?
No.
No.
So, I mean, what, any payment they get is going to go towards paying off their bond, right? Just, the fire district shouldn't be. Just, the fire district shouldn't be paying a, 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 an undetermined amount of that. Because I, I truly feel, and I, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I truly feel that we're just grabbing numbers out of the air, that there's, and, and on both sides. And, and until we can put our finger on what the value is through this information maybe that the chief can compile, then we, it, it improves our argument, right?
If we went into discussions with them with the amount of water we used last year.
Exactly. And, and some, some method of determining what the, the, the cost of the service is, right?
And that's the whole thing. The discussions, we, I know at least one commissioner here feels that they were due a certain amount for water usage and certain maintenance. I believe, I won't speak directly for the other two. Absolutely that there was a fair mark, but our fair market idea was nowhere near close to theirs because there was a makeup that was not allowed because it was not loaded to pass. But they were so in, they were so motivated to get that past year that by contract was not due to them, we were trying to meet them at usage and some maintenance, and it just, it was all, the whole thing or nothing.
So, so the hundred thousand dollars, it's in Article thirteen.
Yep.
Is there, have, have, have we gone through the math to determine that that's a valid number? Or how do we come across that number? It, it sounds like, again, we just...
Like it's a feel-good number.
Exactly.
A good faith.
It was a good faith number to put there.
Yeah.
Less than the old one.
Excuse me?
And less than the old one.
Right, right. But that also ties us into five years of feel-good.
It, it was, the way it was written, and I'm not sure if it reflects areas, it would have to be approved each year. So the contract, but the money...
So the five hundred K would be a do not exceed?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Okay.
The only people right now that are winning are lawyers.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. But we have to look out for, for the district too. You know, because the, the, the foundation that we lay down is going to be what, the rate schedule is going to be in the future. So I think it's a fight worth fighting. I think rather than just, just appeasing them and saying, "Yeah, we'll pay what you want. Let's go with data, let's go with, with hard numbers, and let's dig our heels in." 'Cause they can't shut us off. I'm, I'm not saying let's get it for free. That's not what I'm saying at all. Let's get it at fair.
Let me ask you a question. If you do go after this and you find out that we're paying a lot less than somebody else, are you willing to pay the high of that?
Here's the thing. We should not be going into the fight if that question has not been answered. And that's what I'm asking you guys to do, is to get that number so that we know. Because as, as, as any lawyer will tell you, they never ask a question that they don't know the answer for. And if we're going into this fight not knowing whether they're gonna end up, whether we're gonna be paying more, it's a fight absolutely that we should not be involved in. We need to know what our limit is gonna be, what our, 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 our potential liability is going to be if we're gonna dig our heels in, absolutely.
So, so let me just get this straight here. So if the hydrants are worth, say we, we shop around and we find two or three places, there's six hundred dollars a hydrant, we should just map right out and avoid? And pay what they want?
If it's to the financial benefit of the district, if we can get the service that we need at a lower cost or at this cost, then absolutely. But right now, we don't know, right? We don't know what the value of that hydrant is. All we know is what the, the value that the, that the Tilted Northfield Aqueduct puts on it, the value that they place on it. We need to know. Two things. Number one, it doesn't have commercial value, okay? And that's what you're gonna find when you, when you go looking at other, other water companies. The second thing is, is the value that it has to us as far as the protection of our citizens, okay? But how are we protecting our district? If, if the district says, you know, "That, that hydrant's not worth eighteen hundred dollars a year to me. It's worth five thousand dollars," then that's, that's a decision that the district can make, right? So, so we need to know those two things.
And originally, that's why the budget committee refused to fund it, because we wanted to force the issue so that we would know how much it was costing. And that hasn't happened. We still don't know.
So...
I, I think the only way you're gonna truly find out that answer is if the fire district hires an engineer and a consultant to come up with that determination. Because I don't think the water district's gonna supply us with those numbers, because they would have to do the same thing.
Right.
So if you, as, as you said earlier, we're going based on the district's number. We need to find our own expert, if you will, and find out what that determination is and then, okay. Because right now, if the district hires that person, obviously they're probably gonna favor the district. And if we hire someone, well, they're probably gonna favor us and then we're gonna have to meet somewhere in the middle.
Right, but, but at least you've got a foundational number. You've got a basis to work on, not just a number that's been grabbed out of the air. And, and, and that's a, that's an excellent point, because what, what Paul said earlier is the only people getting rich here are the lawyers. Let's let an engineer get rich to our benefit. So, so maybe let's take some of those legal expenses, or, or you know exactly where, where in the budget you could pull that money, and let's hire an engineer. If it costs two or three thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, it's money well spent. That's the only way it's gonna get resolved. We're gonna sit here next year and year after and year after having the same conversation. Okay, thank you. I've, I've said enough.
At least we saved a hundred and fif- a hundred and fifty-six thousand from last year.
Well, you know, I don't blame them for trying to recoup.
Absolutely.
And, and I think when all is said and done, the fair thing to do, once, once we determine a fair number, is to reimburse them for that amount. I don't think you should skip them.
Town meeting's probably capable of...
It would have to be a special meeting based on, this is a whole process.
That's okay. I'm not just saying, "Take, open my wallet and hand me under fifty-six thousand dollars." Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, so I don't buy the infrastructure cost, because if they have something they wanna sell, they have to have it to sell. If it's inadequate, no one's gonna buy it. Thing we have to keep away in the back of our mind is although it's really nice, really nice, you're able to pull up to a hydrant and have that water right now. But there are plenty of places in this world that don't have that. So keep that in the back of our heads, that, yeah, it's nice, but hell comes to high water. We don't absolutely have to have it. So we have no contract. There is no proposed contract. There's a court date for November?
That's in regards to la- uh, last year's monies?
Hmm?
That's in regards to last year. That's not even in regards to this year.
So there's, there's, there's no inclination whatsoever that in the next twelve months, we're gonna have a contract?
If they wanna talk.
If that's the case, you guys should pull this one out. And, and I think the end-all, do-all is gonna be to pay for what you use. You know, we have methods, this, this methodology, there's ways to pay, to use X amount, pay X amount. Because right now, at a hundred grand for the amount of water we used, you can buy Berkshire Hathaway stock for less money. You're, you're paying way too much for something. Doesn't make any sense. So I, I don't, I don't get the need where there's no, there's no contract, there's no proposal for a contract. Because right now, our fire commissions are, are, are here, the water commissions are here, and you're not even talking. So it's a hundred thousand dollars on the tax rate with the potential of half a million on the tax rate over five years. You, you, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't see it. I think, I really think you ought to pull it.
Yeah, it's a pretty big check to write when you, you have no idea if it's gonna get accepted or if it's worth it or...
Yeah, if it doesn't get accepted, it doesn't get used.
Right.
But you've still taken the people's money.
Yeah, still...
And where's it end up? In the underserved fund?
Unbalanced, yeah. Lapses.
Interesting question.
Any more questions on that?
Any more questions on that one?
Apparatus Equipment Fund Budget. See if the district will raise and appropriate one hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars for the purpose of purchasing fire, rescue, EMS, and ambulance, ambulance charge. With this fund to be withdrawn from the Apparatus and Equipment Special Fund, established under RSA thirty-one colon dash ninety-five-C, adopted March seventh, two thousand and five. Funds appropriated from, funds appropriated from the funds will not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and recommended by the Budget Committee. Majority vote required.
Article fifteen. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate the sum of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new command vehicle with said funds to be withdrawn from the Apparatus and Equipment Special Revenue Fund, established under RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five dash C, adopted March seventh, two thousand and five. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee. Majority vote required.
So wait, are there questions on that?
Mm-hmm. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, I don't know any questions.
Okay. So my question is, um, this is, this is for a command vehicle for Deputy Juvert.
Correct.
And, and I'm, my question is, has, have the, did the budget committee, and, and they said it was presented to them this way. So did the commissioners investigate the availability of a suitable vehicle that costs less, it's less expensive than this vehicle, a suitable vehicle?
Yeah, actually, the, at first, we asked the chief to look at, I believe it was an Explorer, Explorer to be model-specific, because the current is Expedition. And the, everything is in the back where the, all the radios are and things like that. That would not transfer from that to that, and I figured what the cost was, she goes, "What, eight thousand dollars?"
Yeah, so the Explorer is actually cheaper than the Expedition if you just count the vehicle. But then when you take the equipment that we use in the Explorer, a lot of that equipment can be transferred to a new Expedition because it fits. If we buy a new Explorer, that means we have to buy new consoles, new, everything's new because the vehicle is so much smaller width-wise. We couldn't use the command console over again. Um, we'd have to remount all the radios and find all new mounts and stuff like that for those. And it turned out it would cost almost seven or eight thousand more than what the, um, the proposed vehicle is because we're reusing so much paper.
So, so the proposed vehicle is an Expedition?
Yes, yes.
And, and how is, is yours, two years old?
Two thousand and nineteen, I believe.
So it'll be three years old this year?
Yes.
Is this an identical vehicle to that?
Pretty much so, yeah. It's the same model number and stuff. I know it's three model years different, but I think it's pretty much exactly the same. There are some minor differences. Um, his comes with, uh, the new ones come with LED lights. Mine had halogens and stuff like that.
How many miles on the present?
Hundred and fifty.
On, on the one we're, we're replacing?
Hundred and fifty. Over, it's, it's over a hundred and fifty. It's a two thousand and nine.
Yep.
Which is twelve, it's a two thousand and nine. It's twelve years old.
Yep, yep.
And we, we did fix it this year. We, we did some bodywork this year on it.
Yeah.
And according to Deputy Juvert, a lot of the gauges and stuff don't work in it. So if we had them fixed, we're talking a friend one more day.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we fix that one. And what I wanna make sure of is that we're investigating other options. And, and if there, if there are no other options that are viable, and that's why I said suitable vehicle, right? If there's no other su- su- suitable vehicle, then I'm fine with it. If there is a lower-cost vehicle that, and, and, you know, the question can roll over to, is it necessary for all that equipment to be in the vehicle?
That's the way we use it, so yes, that's the way we're designed to use it. And we have all that extra equipment. And if we were to buy something smaller, uh, we wouldn't be able to use all that equipment that we've already purchased.
How old is that, is that equipment that would be going into it?
So the radios, we got from a radio grant, uh, from the feds. Uh, the con- some of the consoles are the original consoles, stuff that we moved over. Um, the command console would be moved over, and that was something I, that I even brought them in. So at the budget committee, I don't think I said them, but that was one of, um, when we bought the command console, it was one of Mr. Walden's concerns, saying, "We don't know if this is gonna be transferable." Well, if we buy this Expedition, it does transfer. If we buy something smaller, it won't.
Okay. Right. Now, how many models on your vehicle, Chief?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What was a vehicle that is not a command vehicle not considered? Is it, is it, you weren't here, but what, what I said was, those vehicles, more than ninety percent of the time are nothing more than transportation. The chief spends a fair amount of time out and about, out of town. The deputy lives out of town, so his goes to Guilford every day. Sixteen hours of the day, his is not available to us, or at least on delayed response. Any given day, anytime, the chief could be out of the district, out of town, unavailable with that command vehicle, which is not available to us as a command vehicle at that point. So why would you not consider a vehicle that, I mean, I'm not telling you the chief needs to walk or buy a bicycle. I'm saying, the, the guy, I mean, the chief needs a vehicle. Does it have to be a fifty-five thousand dollar command vehicle? And if, if, you know, how, how often is it actually used as a command vehicle? How often do we need two command vehicles? If the scene is big enough, you're gonna need that. It's gonna be command vehicles here from other places. So...
So I guess there's, I, I get what he's saying, is the command vehicle should stay in the district. And you need, not that they're making Crown Vics or Sedans anymore, but to go out of the district, you take the sedan or you take the, you know, right?
All right, so when an incident happens, you need, chief, per, chief command personnel should be there. They may not be one or the other depending on availability. But if, say, they're taking an old-day sedan home, now that sedan is coming to the station to get a SUV where instead of going directly to the scene and setting up the command post, the initial incident game there, your captains are taking over and then you're waiting for the command people to take that and relieve another hands-on operator into the fire rather than outside doing the command. So they're responding directly to the scene. Whether they are both responding or if they're doing coverage, it varies. So the dynamics of trying to say, "Okay, you get the big car tonight and I get the small car," it would be very non-practical. So that's part of the reason why practice is command vehicle. The idea is that either one of them could be the one that goes to that scene, is, is in command. And if they're operating out of a smaller vehicle, yes, you have, Lake Street will show up with that. But if it's a big enough event, we will need our command vehicle with our additional radios and monitoring multiple frequencies, incident command boards, things like that. And you want them away from the apparatus. You want them, because the apparatus can be a magnet for people. Staging area can be a magnet for people. So that's what a command vehicle is. It's its own standalone platform for the oversight and command and control of that incident.
Singular, I heard.
You made a great argument for one command vehicle, which I don't speak against.
Okay.
You...
However...
The two doesn't make...
You don't know which one is covering that night. I mean, are they gonna be flip-flopping their gear and their cars every night? Because, oh, you're covering tonight, so you get the big expedition and I'll have the smaller one?
The, the big, the big difference is behind the rear seat.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So...
That's where all the command equipment is, is in the back of the vehicle, correct, so saving eight thousand dollars by reusing the same stuff that would take you higher than the other one.
It's not saving a, by buy that it's, would be spending eight less, however, I believe there is a vehicle we, that can be had, that does everything but what that vehicle does behind the scene, and still be, still be equipped with radio, emergency lighting, that is a lot less money.
In other large cities, do you use, you, large-size utility pickups and things like that, and then their caps, they have all new consoles and things like that, it depends on what you're trying to operate with that?
I understand that, I'm trying to separate the transportation from.
When they're responding, they're responding to the scene from home, if they don't have that command vehicle at that time, they are now coming either way to the station to get the command vehicle to go back to the scene. I, I understand what you're saying.
It's a great circle, but either I'm not explaining myself well, or it's not being understood.
I understand what you're saying, is that you need, when the, an incident happens, whatever apparatus is responding, and a incident command car is, or vehicle is responding.
Okay, what, what did we do until three years ago when we had to?
Responding with the utility with not all the radios and stuff and operating off of a handheld and a mobile radio in the utility, not the multiple frequencies and things like that to, that we now have available in command platforms.
Only in a limited time.
What?
Only in a limited time.
So your concept is that they'll get there and then some other department will show up with their command vehicle and say, okay, take over?
If it's big enough, we need two, yes, if it's not big enough that we need two, no, I mean, I, I think, I, I might be wrong, but I think any mid, I don't wanna say large event, because I don't think we've had any, I have seen Franklin's command vehicle here, I think I've seen Sammerton's and ours, so there's no, I, I just think that we could do something different, think outside that box, and, I mean, the truth of the matter is, bottom line, fifty-four grand for a fully-equipped Expedition is no money, no one's got one on their warrant for seventy-five, so it, it's not, it's not the money, it's, it's the concept of, of more, 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 more.
I don't think we're getting more at this point, we're just replacing what we have.
Well, we are, but we got here by default, if we, we, we had to have one, we could've gotten rid of one and, and remained with one, but someone made the choice because it didn't really amount to anything to get rid of the one we had, and I think we talked about this day then, when you are gonna wanna replace that, and that's gonna be the big ticket.
Well, we, you know, but, I think also, at that time Deputy Jubert was using one of the pickup trucks.
Yes.
And that vehicle has since been retired, so we, we did, we did swap one vehicle for another, granted, they're not equal, but, but we did, we did drop one vehicle when Deputy Jubert took this, and if I could comment, um, I don't know the exact numbers, but my impression is, is that Deputy Jubert is in town more than eight hours per day, um, and oftentimes, I, I've heard of him responding from his home directly in the evening when he's off, off hours.
Absolutely.
Directly to the scene, so, I, I don't want anyone to think that, I don't think he deserves a, a, a vehicle, I just wanna make sure that what he gets is the most cost-effective, cost-effective, and al- and also is useful, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Article sixteen.
Sixteen, operating budget. Article sixteen, the operating budget, see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate, the Budget Committee recommends sum of two million, eight hundred, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for general municipal operations, this article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately, this article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is recommended by the Budget Committee, majority vote required.
Any questions?
Paul, did you get your question answered on the difference, you had one on this one too?
Yeah, I think, I think between Jason and Kevin, they answered that.
Okay.
Thank you, um, I would, I, can I, can I just make a comment with respect to everything? Could you please have at district meeting, the bounds of the Apparatus and Equipment Fund, the bounds of the unreserved, uh, 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 fund, and I think, I think that's it, have accurate numbers for those, please.
Yeah, the, the other side of fund balances is not finalized until the audit's done, and she said that it will be done by then, so.
It's important to have those numbers readily available, because the question's gonna be asked.
Be on my PowerPoint slide, right up on, it'll say fund balances, we'll be all on that one slide.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have anything else we need to, we don't have to go over our seventeen, but, is there anything else we have to do, Captain, for this meeting tonight? All right, I'll entertain a more. Oh, I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-seven.
Thank you, gentlemen, all your hard work.
Thank you.